My name is Keith McIntyre, pastor of the Independent Baptist Church of Monizuma. And just appreciate the work of Park Without Reverse and their ability to connect people with government. And I believe that Christians need to be connected with government and be aware of what's taking place. We've come alongside them to help for a couple of months to get the town council and board meetings out. But would like to invite you, if you don't have a church home, to the Independent Baptist Church in Monizuma. Our services are Sunday morning at 10:30. We have adult Bible classes and children's classes at 9:30. If we could ever do anything for you, you can contact me at MIB.church. Thanks for watching.
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
I'd like to welcome John back. Nice to see you with your camera.
Good to be here.
Yeah. I think there was one extra.
I'm gonna go over there. Minutes from last meeting?
Yeah, I didn't see any corrections.
Okay.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from last month.
I guess I would second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any correction?
Not that I see.
Okay. We'll go around the room for public comment. Well, gosh, we can start with you, Mr. Comar. Would you like to say something?
I have nothing, actually.
Oh, okay.
I'm prepared to observe.
You got Elvis and Jamie. Elvis and Jamie back there.
I just want to let everybody know that I did get rid of the tree for the sidewalk.
We saw.
I did my part.
It got cleaned up pretty quickly.
Pretty quick. He did a really good job.
Vicky?
I got a call from the water company, from Andrea, about two weeks ago. She said, "I came up on the leak indicator." And at that point, I had used 46,930 gallons of water. So, I checked all in my house, the sinks, the stool, the shower, and the washer. There was nothing leaking. So, I went outside, and it was my hydrant. My hydrant doesn't leak, neither does my hose. But I had-
You're saying hydrant. Do you mean your spigot?
Well, whatever, yeah, whatever.
Because I'm thinking hydrant is, you know...
Fire hydrant.
Fire hydrant.
So, your outdoor spigot?
Your outdoor spigot.
Yes.
Okay.
So, it was not leaking any water. It was dry as a bone. And, but, the-
It was on.
The faucet was on. And then I remembered, I got called away when I was out watering flowers. And then we got rained for like seven, eight, nine days. And I didn't know until Andrea called. And so, I asked her if she would have Jace come out and read my meter again, because after she called the first time, I went out and I shut it off, and I called her back. I said, "It was an accident. I walked away from it, and I shouldn't have, I guess." So, she said at that time, my water bill was $750 for one month. And however, the water permit kicked in and took away $450. And so, that brought my bill down to $328. And Natalie will attest, my water bill every month is between $81 and $87.
I think that's the average, yeah.
Every month. I don't abuse the water. But I've been here almost 49 years. I've never asked the board for consideration to write that part off, or whatever it is that you do, I don't know. But I'm just, I can't pay it. That's way out of my budget. And there's just no means. So, that's what I'm here for.
Well, usually our adjustments are just for when there's a leak, you know? We've had people come in and-
And we even have to show proof that it's been fixed.
Right.
We ask for a receipt typically.
Receipt for whatever was fixed, was causing the leak. So, most of the time, we don't, when that happens, we've had it happen a few times, and we have not adjusted the bill. So, we can discuss it as a board and see what everybody thinks.
I know we've had that issue since I've been on the board once, and we, John was still on board, and he said that was something we can't do, because we haven't done it in the past, because it's only for actual repair purposes that we would do it, because it's not something, we do it for one, we've got to do it for all. So, I don't know. It's up to you guys. What are your thoughts?
Yeah.
But we've never done it before. We've never adjusted it before.
As long as I've, as long as I've been around, we've never adjusted for something like that. We have had people, I've had several people call me in here and say, "I left it on all night." And the State Board of Accounts likes you to keep some kind of an accounting that you fix it for a leak. They like you to take a receipt, you know, when you adjust water. Our ordinance states you can have one adjustment per calendar year unless you come before the board and ask for a second one. Say you have a second instance of a leak or something like that, something else happens. So, that's, I mean, this is on you guys to do that, but, you know...
So, how does a water permit kick in? So, how did it come up to the 300 or 400?
So, when you have, you have a sprinkler permit on your account, in the winter, January, February, March, your account builds an average. Those are historically your low water usage months. So, when you have a sprinkler permit activated on your account, when you've paid your $1, in the summer, when you use more than your average water-
Of those three months.
Of those three months, it'll go, it'll revert your wastewater amount back to the average for those months. So, you know, if you use, I mean, some people come in and say, "My sprinkler permit didn't kick in," and we'll have to remind them they didn't use their average. But you'll see it on your bill when your summer sprinkling credit comes in. It'll say that on the right-hand side in bold letters if it activates. So, that's how that works. So, like, if you have a leak right now, if you've had a leak, then, and you had a sprinkler permit, then most likely your wastewater wasn't affected, just your water was affected. So, that's what happens with Vicky, is her water is affected, but her wastewater amount is still low because of the sprinkler permit.
If she, if she has to pay the bill, can she make a normal payment like her water would normally be a month, and then pay a small amount on the excess monthly?
I mean, that would be fine. It's whatever, it's whatever you guys want to do. We can handle it however you want.
We've done, we've done payment plans before.
I think if we can, if we can adjust it, then, you know, she pays her regular bill each month and then make a small payment on the excess. Because I feel if we can't, if we can't call it off, then that would be a fair thing. Vicky could pay a little bit on it each month, pay your regular bill, then pay a little bit on the over amount that you, that's occurred.
How long would the time be?
Well, you will-
How much do you think you can handle an extra?
An extra amount, a little bit.
I am tight right now.
Well, I think you could talk to Natalie about how much you could pay.
What was the extra amount?
It's $213.
The $213?
Do you think the- The difference between 387.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's her, the water portion of her bill is just really high right now. The wastewater is, because, yeah, so...
So, you could pay it, could you pay an extra 20, 25 a month on it?
I will.
It was 217.
I just don't want my water shut off.
Well, we're not going to do that. We're trying to work out a plan here for you.
You could, well, and we can make sure no penalties get applied to that account if you make a payment arrangement. So, yeah, granted, I can flag that every month, too.
Just come in tomorrow or whatever, and they'll figure out.
What do you guys think of, if we split it up over 12 months, it's just under $20. So, I mean, an extra $20 isn't terrible. You know, no penalties in that 12 months, as long as you're making your payment.
Right.
What do you, you think on that, come in tomorrow?
I already told Barb it's okay.
Well, you'll still have to sign some.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, I know. I'll go see Natalie.
Okay, yep. And you'll be in in the morning, so...
So, all in favor of putting Vicky on a payment plan?
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
I don't, that needs to probably be a motion, so I don't know.
I'm just going to be clear myself. I'm sorry that happened, Vicky. I mean, it could happen to anybody, and it has before, but-
Happened at our house multiple times.
Okay. Griffin?
Yeah, I need to ask for an adjustment.
Then you have a receipt.
I have a receipt.
And what was leaking for you, sir?
What'd you say?
What was leaking at your house?
It was the, it was the shut-off valve of the line coming into the house.
Griffin received an adjustment in March for a water here that was leaking.
Okay.
So, this is the second leak he's fixed in the last year, so I told him he had to come and ask for you guys.
The shut-off valve under your house.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was like, that was before, though.
What is the amount of the adjustment?
Um, I'll have to figure it. I'll have to figure it. He's also on a sprinkler permit, so it will be wastewater, it would just be water. I kind of passed the math earlier. It'll be about $30, $40.
You want to just bring your receipt up here?
Sure.
And you replace that yourself and everything?
Uh, with a friend of mine, yeah.
Okay.
I'm like, "Do you hear?"
Yeah.
Okay. So, you got to make a motion on that.
Yeah, that's what he told me. He said he's-
Is everybody all right, since Griffin brought his receipt in to adjust?
I'm fine with it, I guess.
I think he found it pretty quickly, so I don't think it's too bad.
Okay. Okay, good for you.
Okay. Okay. Mark, you want to give us a talking to?
Yeah, a talking to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's the pictures for you. Actually, Cody gave me a call yesterday, and it was good timing, because I spent time from my CD. There's more right there.
Yeah. Yep, you're upside down.
And while we haven't progressed a lot with the, pardon me, we got the, phase one was 1A, B, and C, which was, 1A was south of town, B in town, C north of town. This is kind of an extension of 1C, I guess you'd say. If you recall, last time I was here, I had met with the county councilman, and they weren't willing to do the bridge with us, as we had talked about before. So, we're going to put a bridge in where the original railroad bridge was. And this sketch shows that. And what we'd like to do is work on getting that in this fall, put a bridge there, and then basically build the trail to the corner of North Main and Miller. Okay? It's still a piece, and we haven't given up on the rest of the trail around here, but we've also moved on, because we've got five phases to this project, and we're working on phase two and three, north of town, basically up through from Jessup to Catlin and north of Catlin right now. And we've got a lot of bridge work and other things going on, but this is what we'd like to move forward with. I've already checked, we've contacted IDAM and DNR for permits. No permit is required, okay? Because it's above the flood plain, and the ditch doesn't require a permit to install the bridge. Got the design of the abutments, and we can move forward with getting estimates and getting those done. We've done, actually, the bridge is going to be an old railcar that we're modifying, that we'll set across there, which is pretty cool. And it's going to look pretty good, I think. And we'll, we're finishing up the work on that, and we're going to, just, we're going to get an estimate on getting it painted as we speak. So, hopefully this fall, we can get this in and get the trail built up. I will have to move one utility pole, which I'll work with Duke to get that done, just to allow enough room for a corner there. The path isn't exactly like that, that it will get from the bridge to there, might have a couple little curves in it or whatever. And we'll, if, if you desire, what I want, I need to know is, what would you like, similar to the new sidewalk you put in, where you have the rumble strips with the little buttons on them? You want it to look like that at that corner?
Probably needs to be ADA compliant.
It would be ADA compliant.
Which corner, which corner are you talking about?
This is Miller and North Main.
Okay, so you're right here.
This would be the northeast corner.
So, what's the D1? Is that all, is this all gravel here?
No, that's just the standard sidewalk.
This was coming from the, yeah, this is north.
I just see your D1 up here, so it's being-
Okay. This is still on hold. We had to adjust that. So, basically, what we're looking at, get across the creek to this corner right here. Here's Miller Street.
Yep.
So, it's right at the corner right there. And if, you can look and see, there's two poles, utility poles there right now with some guide wires and whatnot. We'll have to do some adjustments with Duke in there.
With us putting a crossing there, do you guys have plans for doing any kind of like speed bump or anything there?
No, this is basically just connecting right now with the town's-
Existing, yeah.
Existing sidewalk system. Cody did bring up that you guys are looking at doing some work.
Yeah, we've got that part tonight.
And we're, I'm open to looking at that and seeing if we can do something with that. Again, we can't, our guidelines on the grant that we got, we can't build sidewalks, but we can build trail. If you recall, we were going to build like an eight-foot trail originally, and it was just beyond what we could afford in doing that right, right then. But we've been able to save a little bit of money in some areas. Some other things have still cost a whole bunch.
Yeah.
And we're not giving up to come back and try to help and work on something. So, I'm definitely open to meeting with Cody or whoever you guys are working with.
Are you going to stick around for the meeting, or?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to be sticking around, or?
I can.
Not, okay. Because we can kind of go over, we're going to go over some of the quotes for the sidewalk project.
Okay.
Part of what we've got quoted is that sidewalk, but if-
Along the east side of Main?
Yes, because of the project. But if you guys are going to need it to be the eight foot, we're going to have to put that portion, we're going to have to re-figure that, because it's standardized.
Yeah, we can talk about that and see if it's something that we could maybe do or be involved with and help with. I mean, that is, our intent from the beginning is to try to help get something through town as well.
But we'll, we'll have to talk about parking along there. If we make it wider, is there going to still be room?
Essentially, it cut into their, like, grass, if I remember correctly.
Like the tree row?
Yeah.
I can't remember how it worked. It's been a long time since we've been there.
Have you got some plans already growing up?
We don't have plans growing up.
Okay.
We're not that sophisticated, Mark.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah.
Winging it.
Just, trust me, I'm doing a lot of winging, too. But that's fine. But I think we can talk about that and see if there's something.
Yeah, because if you guys could-
If we want to keep it on the east side, which we talked about at one time, I mean, that was one of the options, and there's room, even if we got it down to here, to this, is maybe something that we could work on and would be something that we could fit into what we're-
Another area I thought we might talk about is from the trailhead to Park, going down middle or central.
Central Street.
Central Street, that sidewalk there.
Hmm, is there enough room, though? We talked about that at one-
I don't think for the eight foot, no, I don't think there is either.
We talked about that one time. Last time I was here, too, we, because I was asking about going ahead and connecting over to Middle Street from the trailhead down the alleyway, which would have been, which would be paved, even if we just connected to the road, to Middle Street, and not do, because of the concern on the parking spaces and things like that, with Park.
We decided that would be problematic, but, yeah.
I think the concern was more on the, I think, I feel like was on the loss of parking spaces and going through the alley. But we could just connect to Middle Street at that point, just bring it down from the trail to the Middle Street, through the alleyway.
Talking about the railroad bed, that, if Judson property is built into that, isn't that?
Yeah, she built onto that right there, yeah.
That's where the issue lies. Because she had part of the right-of-way, and her property is actually built into the railroad bed.
I think you're talking about two different things.
Yeah, we are talking about, I know what you're talking about.
You're talking about coming down middle and then over?
Coming from the, from just the south edge of the trailhead, through the alleyway, over straight to the park.
Oh.
And just connect to Middle Street.
Yeah, we talked about that yesterday.
Yeah, because we were ready to do that, and it was getting really close to the strawberry festival, and then you said, "Well, you weren't sure about that." And the concerns were on the, the whole thing around the park, which I kind of share those concerns.
Right.
I didn't, I wasn't a real fan of that. But if we just connect to Middle Street, we could potentially go ahead and start working on planning that, and not go, not go, not cross the road, just connect to Middle Street. And then you have through the alleyway, along the park there, to get to Main Street. We'd still like to move forward going north, also up to this street. We haven't progressed on that, just because we've focused on other things, but that's not out of the question either. And I think we possibly could do both, come up to the street and connect to, connect to Middle Street, going east and west through the alleyway, if that would still be something to consider.
My goal on the sidewalks in town is I'd like to have decent sidewalks going east, west, and north, south. So, if you want to walk the whole town, you can do it.
Right.
And that's why I was hoping, maybe we could do something on Central.
Right. If there's room, again, we can't do sidewalks. That's, that's just, that's just not something-
I mean, or even if there's room for eight foot there.
If there's room, we can look at it and see.
There might be on the north side of the street.
Okay.
I think that's right.
Well, we'd have to just figure that out and see if there is, and-
And we could talk about that, because we've got some of the-
That's good. We're just wondering if you were open to that.
Sidewalk plans.
I'm open. I still want to work to get something through town as well, if we can, and at least to connect to the businesses and Main Street and all that, if we can. And we've forgotten about you, we aren't done with this phase.
Right.
But we're just, we just-
And we understand you've got a lot of-
We've got a lot going on.
Balls in there.
Exactly. And we're still working on the rest of it. And this is, this is still open for discussion and different options.
Right. That's great.
Okay.
We're glad to hear that.
Glad to see you back, Mark.
All right, thank you.
Justin, did you have anything in here? Yes?
This is Diane and Sean.
Diane and Sean, hello.
Hello, on Main Street. We're just here to observe.
You're just here to-
Observe.
Observe? Oh, okay.
I mean, if you guys are going to put new sidewalks down that way, we're-
Oh. You're all four of us.
They'll be nice and edged.
Oh, you did.
Fantastic.
I like that. Are you on the east side, or?
Yeah, next to Elvis's, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
I don't know where you're at now.
Jace, did you have anything?
Jace, would you like to speak? I thought you had something. No?
Did I have something?
Gary, do you have?
Are you looking at anything?
I don't have anything.
Oh, Jerry Lindell's back there.
I'll find him to see.
Jerry?
Oh, I was just wanting to check on the water main that was there right at the end of Miller Street and Main. I brought up a couple months ago.
That's taken out?
Yeah.
I drove down there.
Black top was kind of getting away from it.
I didn't see anything popped up enough that I would have been concerned, but I may not have seen what you were talking about.
I just know back to the black top is getting away from it, and when you come around that corner there, you're always hitting it, and stuff.
Well, I can kind of-
So, I thought your, your discussion was, the last time was, you get a little road patch and put it around it, just to fill it hole, you know?
Yeah, and I'll be doing road patches here in the next week or two.
Okay.
So, I'll put it on the list.
Okay.
That makes me think about when you asked about the sulfur branch. Do you know who's in charge of that, Mark, as far as keeping that cleaned out? Is it core engineers, or?
No, because it's not a-
It's not a waterway.
Right, it's not, there's a certain term, and that's why we, we don't have to have a permit to get across it.
Wow, it's considered more of a ditch, is my understanding of it.
Is it maybe a wetland?
No.
No. No, because we went through all that.
Just a ditch.
In order, for the bridge, we had to look into all that.
I thought, I remember us finding out that it's technically the property owners, somebody was talking about mowing it or-
I don't know if we actually-
I don't think we ever determined it.
Determined it, but-
Yeah.
So, if it's a ditch, then it's, the adjoining property keeps it cleaned out, or?
I would say.
The property lines go through that ditch.
Yeah.
They go all the way through.
Right. I mean, like, are we on the south of it?
Yeah.
Right there, right where the bridge was.
So, you might own to the middle of it, and then property on the other.
Yeah, I'd have to look and see where the property lines are. I've got a survey to show that.
Would you please?
Yeah.
Check that out?
And where are you?
I know.
I mean, I know there's some things now, we've actually pulled some things out along the trail there and put down, what's it look like further up and beyond?
I know farther down on Cemetery Street, I know that gets cleaned out, but I think that might be, I don't know, who does that? Have we done that, the town?
I think the farmer done it.
You think the farmer did it? Even though there's no cross there?
They did, because they cleared a bunch of fence lines a couple years ago.
All right.
They had some equipment in there, cleaned it all out.
I think I can get a volunteer crew to probably do that, or piece of it there.
I'll tell Jimbo he needs to get on that.
I will. I'll tell him you said so. He'll really get on it then.
Okay.
Are we the whole business?
Whole business.
All the bills have been paid on stormwater. There were a couple small bills, 22 cents and 40 cent checks I had to send to B&amp;T and HWC, because SRF does not do change, they round. So, there was a small balance, so I sent a couple small checks. Chrissy Darrell has begun the closeout. She is submitting the closeout letter on the project, and then she'll have one more round of closeout, but we are pretty much done.
And the murals, Cody, you want to talk about the murals?
So as everybody can see, first mural is done, we will be painting the rest of that building, probably in the next month or so, to match the block there. There is another one that's going to be put up along the Main Street there, on the old nineteen hundred building. That's going to be a little bit different, that's going to be a panel mural, so it can be moved if ever need be, since we don't own that property. Other than that, I mean, all I have to say is it looks good, I think.
It looks fantastic.
It does look, it looks great.
Tons of compliments, tons, everybody seems really happy with it. She was so sweet, and she was out there in that heat, and she was awesome.
She's very talented.
I think we need to thank Cody for this also, and this has been how many years process for you?
Two years for Cody, yes.
Two years for Cody.
Way to go, Cody.
Yes, way to go, Cody.
Fantastic.
He's worked really hard.
Fantastic project.
And we got the police station window closed up, and so they could do that.
And I do believe that their new front window is in, so hopefully we can get that installed in the next week or so.
I thought you said it was put it, I was like, that was quick.
No, I think it's, I think it's in.
Okay, got you.
So.
Who's installing that one?
Elite View Windows, the guys that quoted it. They're doing some windows in town right now, and I asked him if it was in, and he said he thought it was, so hopefully we'll get it in there shortly.
And the streetlights are all installed, don't they take three days?
So the streetlights have all been upgraded to LED, except for about four fixtures.
They were different sized lights.
There were, there were fifty-eight total that he installed, there were fifty-eight total on the audit, on the streetlight audit. And then the installer came by, and he said that there were four that were not on his map and not on his list. So I drove down and got the full numbers off all of those. He also let Duke know that they were not on the list, I let Regina know, so she says they'll get those swapped out. So they're really nice.
They do make a big difference, especially in my neck of the woods, it's.
Well, and I only, I had one person, she didn't complain, she just said it was so bright, and the way it was shining was in her, in her bed, and kind of in her living room. And the installer was still in town, and he went down there and he adjusted it, and he put like a shade on it, so it wouldn't be so bright, and she seemed satisfied. So he was really, he said it happens every place he goes, he said they're so much brighter, that there's always a couple of houses that they just direct into. But definitely worthwhile, they are very nice.
That was very good.
And we'll get rebate, I can't wait, so.
Have we spun it in our mind already?
Yes, about ten times.
All right. Oak Street property. Oh, oh, about vacating the alley.
Ken, did you go check that alley out?
I have not, I don't even know exactly where it's at.
Remember we talked about, it's at the end of Oak Street, the very end.
On this end?
Yeah, that end, the very last house.
A little brown?
A little brown house.
Okay.
So it would be like, where, pretty much where her driveway is, but it would go back, and then there used to be, there's.
And it made it ninety.
Mm-hmm, yeah, would make it ninety.
And that's what she's.
Yeah, she would just, if we vacate, she's got the property on one side of it, and the property on the other side of it, and then we have the alley run through that. She's asking if we vacated, then she can join her two properties together.
I think that's actually a good idea myself, I don't know what you guys think, I mean, I don't know.
Kevin, from a public safety standpoint, did you ever go down there?
I went down there for, I can't remember what I, I looked at it.
If we vacate it, then you just, you're, I mean, in the event of an emergency, if you needed to get behind the Oak Street houses, that would be your current access, even though we don't actively like maintain an alley there, that's, that's the only thing, so.
Because there's nothing on, there's nothing from Middle Street to go up that direction.
Right. So that's your only way to go behind those.
I mean, most, most people are usually pretty.
Kind.
Cooperative.
If I've got to get a fire truck or something in their yard, most people are usually part of the situation, so they don't really don't care. Now, I'm not saying everybody would be that way, but I don't, I don't really see the harm in it, I don't think.
Okay, well, why don't you guys, Ken, why don't you still take a look at it?
I was going to say, I'll go down there with you if you want to walk.
And you guys take an action, and maybe then, why don't you guys have actually looked at it, so.
Just so I get a better, I know which one, but I just, it's been a while since.
Talking up there by Deckers, aren't you?
Yeah.
Coming around, between Bobby's house and the other half of the north.
Yeah, behind Bobby's house and Ruth's house, yes.
That's what I thought, that's where I went.
Yeah.
I see the next items.
Tom Hutter.
Yeah, just seeing measurements on that.
I've already got, we, and we've got one quote, I was going to actually.
Quote for, to install it and all that?
Yeah, and it was like eight grand, more than, I, about double what I thought it would be. Roger actually came over and measured it all, and looked at what we would need for ADA compliance for it, and. I should have brought that with me. Do, do, we didn't print off the, the.
The Kate Smire quote?
Yeah.
I do have it.
So Kate Smire glasses.
I think it's on my desk. Eight thousand dollars is a little too rich for us for a front door.
So I was gonna see if you wanted to. Check a couple of other places, or if you have any.
You can get a cheaper one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, these were glass, because they said that.
Well, it was a solid door, with just two side lights, that I looked at on Lowe's website.
Well, they were quoting us like a glass front door.
They were doing more of a storefront door.
Yes, yes, because of ADA compliance, they said that that would not, whatever we have there would not be ADA compliant because of the width of it or something, I don't understand it.
Well, I got a coat guy I work with, so I'll just get them to my own.
Yeah, if we didn't have done before, we're.
I can show you what it.
Your side quote, you can see it on there. I just, I thought, I had.
What it kind of drew up was like. This. A door and then two glass panels. I think he had it tinted.
The trances will make sure.
And then a bar on the inside, just a, like a handle on outside. He had a mailbox included there, but I told him, take that off, because there's no need for it, because we've got the mailbox up here.
We're talking about a new front door here, it's ADA compliant. In and out, easy.
It is opening and closing much better, since Roger worked on it, it's much better.
Yep, I will bring stuff.
If anybody wants to take them down, strip them, hang them, put them back up.
I do not.
No. They don't look bad from here.
No, they don't look bad from here.
We need to call and get other quotes, I can, just. We've got the one, and then you can keep it.
We could definitely get it cheaper.
Yeah, that's, and he told me, he's like, I'm usually not the cheapest because of the glass that we use, so. Okay. I think that's shown there. We've got the street superintendent.
That's where you have that one.
I've got two, two things to update on, I agree.
We're talking about street superintendent now, Jason Clintalk's been working out very well for us so far this summer. And he is, since he has taken over the cemetery mowing, and we don't have to sub out that. We want to give him a pay raise according to that.
It reflects the extra work, that reflects the extra work.
Yeah, the extra work and the savings we're getting. The last ordinance, we have to make a.
Amendment.
Amendment, thank you now, to the ordinance from, which we do every January, but we're going to do it now, so he can start with that soon. And then we won't be doing one in January for him, so. It's nineteen dollars and ten cents per hour now, and we are looking to raise that to twenty-three dollars per hour. Do I have any? Questions from the rest of the board, and want to talk about that?
We've talked about doing at the beginning of the year, and he's taken over the mowing and stuff, so I have no problems with that.
I think we should.
What, it saved us twelve grand on the.
We were, it was costing us just over ten thousand dollars to sub out the mowing before, and. So, yeah. I do believe you're still money ahead.
Ken, what do you think?
I'm fine with it, I mean, we need to take a vote, don't we?
Yeah, you need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to that.
Oh, he's going to make a motion to.
Approve the ordinance?
Approve the pay raise to twenty-three dollars per hour, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Same sign? Motion is passed.
Who's your, who's your first?
Me, and then Bob's second.
Okay, sorry. And that was all?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so what I'll do is I'll make that an official amendment, and you guys will sign it next month.
Okay.
But it will go into effect.
It can go into effect immediately, yeah, that's my idea, so. I asked Scott Craig how to do that, and then he was, he said the salary amendment was the way to go, and we actually did that last year on something else, so.
The drainage grate, have we gotten any quotes on trying to get that thing screwed?
Nope, I will have one within a week here.
Okay.
Amazing.
Any other old business?
I mean, sidewalk is the next, next kind of new slash old.
Sidewalks. Now we're on a new business, sidewalks.
Sidewalks are kind of new old, we started talking about them last month.
Yeah. And.
Oh, truck.
Discussion.
So, yeah, so we have sidewalks, then the trucks.
We want to talk about the sidewalks and what.
Okay.
What you've gotten here, Mr. BP.
Okay, so we are looking at, we made a motion to go forward with the sidewalk project. We are looking at, you know, doing about eleven hundred square feet of sid, was it, yeah.
Linear feet.
Yeah, linear feet of sidewalk. We do have three different quotes. Two of them come in over eighty-five thousand, one came in, you know, just under thirty. Yeah.
Okay, that was what his was.
Well, and I think that's what we did for all of them. Oh, he did twelve.
He did twelve, and then this one was.
Yeah, it's one sixty-six, so, that's what I told them, always one.
Okay. They're pretty close, okay.
So.
Cody, back up for just a second, just to qualify, since we do have public here, the sidewalks, we walked the sidewalks on both sides of Main Street on the north end, and the concrete guys rated it, some of the sidewalk is good and will stay, and then they rated what would pull out and repaint, replace. So that was a discussion on both sides, so.
Is it going to be our section of sidewalks stays?
I don't know, I don't remember Diane.
Depends on if you, you have good sidewalks. Potentially.
You might have good sidewalk, I don't know, but it was a.
It's not a personal thing, though.
Yeah, it was, it was about getting clear path sidewalk from one side to the other, level.
Essentially, allowing that portion.
Yeah, you know what I mean, so, and I don't remember where yours was.
You're in there.
There's some white markings on there, so, no one be mad at us.
So essentially, us starting this, one third essentially would be trying to help connect the trail, because both sides are now, one, I mean, there's no sidewalk there. To the, you know, Main Street, and be able to connect it over. With the three quotes, I mean, we obviously have one that's way cheaper than the other. And that's what I was going to show, talk to you about, is especially if, you know, he might be able to do some work for you guys at a, you know, cheaper rate, maybe we can extend one side of the sidewalk out to that eight foot, that way we can have the trail compliance, and then maybe you guys might be able to chip in on that portion. And then that gives us more free up budget to do other problem areas in town as well. And we've got some extra in the budget at the lower end of the quote to do some other like problem areas, so that's.
There was a little girl that tripped this week, there was four little kids walking with her mom, and she tripped and fell, and I was like, I'm sorry, and then I went out to help and make sure there was no boo-boos and everything, so it is a problem. Also, on that sidewalk quote, so that is for four inch thickness, and then under the driveways that go across there, it does increase to six inch thickness. So he did account for that on that. Your, in your low end bid from Thompson's Flatwork, is that what it's called? He does sidewalks in Clinton and Fairview, so he is experienced in that area, so.
But how, I, I can't even wrap my head around the cost difference.
Right.
That's, I mean, I mean, just in my world, this would be just totally gone.
It, it is completely. It is completely wild, yes.
For both of those to be.
Yeah, I'm not saying that these are within eight hundred dollars, and he's like sixty thousand difference.
Like a third, yeah.
Because contractors are very busy, and they don't need to work.
Yes.
That's why prices are high, we're dealing with that on a lot of things right now.
Eighty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was like a twenty.
Well, and.
Well, and that's.
I mean, and I talked to Scott Craig today on the phone, and he's the lawyer for Clinton, he's the attorney for Clinton and Fairview Park too, and he says that they've used Brad Thompson multiple times over in that area, he does great work. You know, he meets all the checkboxes to do that work for those cities, so he's pretty experienced.
Which, and that's how we got Brad.
Right, that's how we got, well, we got his number from Jones and Sons, that's how we started, but he said that he, no one would be able to beat his price. I mean, he told us from the get-go.
But he has absolutely nothing, I like this guy's, you know, like all these, I see includes wire removal, I mean, this guy doesn't have squat up there.
Yeah, it is, it doesn't include removal and all of that, because he did talk to Jase, when Jase and I met with him, we did talk about that, so.
All that to do is find us a part of it.
Jase just was supposed to find him a place to, to get rid of the concrete, there's a lot of farmers that'll take that.
Right.
So that's all he asked out of Jase, so.
I think some of that was full aprons too on the driveway.
Some of what they did on the other boards was full driveway aprons for.
I think that is why those quotes may be that much higher, but you take away the aprons, I'd say they're still ten to twenty thousand higher than what.
Yeah.
But Thompson's is just a, you know, a bump out, so you're not going to go.
Yeah, I did have two contractors say there is going to be one driveway that will be crossed that is going to hold water afterwards, because it is a, a pretty good dip into it. And that would be the red house across from, from mine.
Eleanor McPike's old house.
So that may be an issue to where they may have to pour into it a little more in, in the end.
Are we doing that side?
That, that quote is for both sides of Main Street on this end.
Oh, both sides.
And you also have a quote to remove that tree, that needs to come out down here too.
You have that.
I think Carol, you have the tree removal.
I did get a.
Did you get another one?
I got another quote, it was eighteen hundred for lane.
Eighteen hundred from lane.
That was.
Eighteen hundred, that's with the.
With the stump.
Okay.
So part of the sidewalk project, we are going to have to remove a big tree right there in front of the old saloon. What they're calling the old saloon, I guess, I don't.
Right, it is, yeah.
The haunted mansion.
Ghost house.
We've got one for eighteen hundred, one for sixteen fifty-five, we obviously would go with the, cheaper of the two, I don't know if we need to, did he say we need to get more than, okay.
He did not.
Because under.
He just, he just said that this, this was not anything I had advertised on the newspaper for bids based upon the pricing that we were at, so.
So I think we can make the motion to approve that.
I mean.
As far as sidewalks, I think there's a little more discussion, because I mean.
Right.
There's no way I can vote on something like this without lack of detail, you know, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's just not even in the ballpark.
On Brad Thompson's?
Yes.
Oh, you mean on the sidewalk? Yeah, I don't think we're that far yet.
I got a lot of concrete guys I work with, so I mean, I, I would feel more comfortable talking and get up what the actual millennial foot price is, I mean, that to me is.
He was thirty.
Twenty-five, I thought he was twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
It is, it's twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because he said, yeah, he said it'd be twenty-five to forty, depending on footage of coming in at twenty-five per line your foot. Cause he said, yeah, he said it'd be twenty-five to forty depending on footage of coming at twenty-five per line your foot.
So, next meeting I think we can...
Yeah, you do need to remember that the season is coming quickly.
Yeah, coming to the end.
Yeah.
It is, so if you want to do one...
And this is also money that we have to spend by...
So...
Money is also earmarked to be used.
So I did an additional appropriation for thirty thousand dollars from our ARP money. I was listening back through today and I was supposed to do thirty-five thousand. I did thirty, but I can do another one. ARP money needs to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-four or it must be under contract by the end of twenty-four on paper. So after we, after I took thirty thousand of it and did an appropriation, because it's spent by appropriation, it's not budgeted. It's grant money, so you don't budget grant money. So, I did that appropriation for thirty, that leaves eleven thousand nine sixty-seven twelve in the fund, so.
I mean, realistically, if we end up going with this quote, we don't have to mess with...
An additional...
I mean, obviously, we're gonna want him to give us a little better specs than just the basic quote that he's given, just so solid writing.
We're gonna have to have him come back, aren't we, and if we're gonna do... Are we doing both sides of the...
This is, he was the original one to come out and measured everything.
But I thought we talked about doing the east side of Main and not go with the east and west side down here. What'd we decide?
Well, I, this was all quoted.
You guys have decided.
Well...
Correct, so, I mean, realistically, we've got a thousand sixty-six...
Yeah.
Feet mapped out.
Jace did a quick measurement the other day. What'd you come up with, seven hundred and seventy?
About seven hundred feet.
About seven hundred feet.
Five driveways.
About seven hundred feet with five driveways on, from, did you go from the Civic Center? Where'd you start?
Civic Center, south side of the Civic Center to the church.
To the church.
Yeah.
To your church or to the church? Did you go past to the church?
No, I stopped at the church.
Okay.
Stopped at the church.
So, so Jace did that the other day. He did a measurement on that. So if you take Brad Thompson's twenty-five dollars and you do the math on that, that was another nineteen thousand dollars. And there are some good sidewalk in there that's savable as well. You can take your additional ARP money and you can do some down that side too. Because you've gotta spend that money anyway.
Yeah.
And you can make up the difference with edit money, which is also spent by additional appropriation because it's part of our capital improvement plan. And maybe you could do all that, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just throwing the numbers out to you from what, the legwork that Jace has done in here and, you know, meeting with Brad and that kind of stuff, so.
Well, I feel more comfortable if we're gonna do both sides to at least do the one side all the way down to the church or as far as we can get if we have the extra appropriation money.
We have more money, that's what I mean, we have more money and we haven't talked about using that ARP money for anything else. No one's ever said, "Let's use it for this" or "Let's use it for that."
Other than sidewalk project.
For a sidewalk project, we use it for the stormwater project, obviously. We used it for our first purchase of water meters when we bought the first batch of fifty. We used some of that money in there to get us started on meter replacement.
Amount in the ARP?
I was just saying, this is just crazy.
It's eleven thousand nine sixty-seven twelve.
No, the total was like forty...
Oh, forty-one thousand nine sixty-seven.
I didn't see much of you.
I took someone's, I'm rotation.
Email.
Yeah, might have been.
Well, yeah.
So I mean, if we use all of that, that's sixteen seventy-eight essentially in sidewalks and...
So we are agreed we're going to do the east side?
You guys have to make a motion on what you're doing, you guys thought that.
About it.
Well, if we're gonna get another estimate...
Why don't we say, do we have to, do we have to figure that tonight or if we're talking estimates and stuff next time?
It's already August, about three months.
So...
I mean, is there any objections to...
If we...
Most as, as much as east side of Main Street that we possibly can?
Oh, no, I have no objection on that.
If we appropriate an extra eight hundred feet of sidewalk for that side of town. If we use the ARP money, that's only forty-seven hundred dollars that we have to come up with from other and that gets us all of this side, which is the goal, which, I mean, and if you guys can help out and, you know, so we can extend that at all, I mean, that might even cover part of that, so who knows? So, I mean, we've...
So you, so you wanna change the scope of work is basically what you're saying and you wanna concentrate on the other side of the road and...
Well, keep this side of town, I'm saying we could add the extra eight hundred and after ARP, we'd only be looking... And that ARP, your seven hundred is what you measured for all of the other side, so eight hundred would give us plenty of extra sidewalk.
Right, if you look at your, um, fund number forty-three, four thirty-six, that's your C edit money. That money is not budgeted, you got fifty-three thousand dollars there, you can take the balance out of there with an additional appropriation. The only thing we've really used that money from with over time, we've used it for community crossings matches. And we used a little bit of it for something else, but we get thirteen hundred dollars a month, so it, it accumulates pretty quickly. So if you do want to do that much more sidewalk, it would be my suggestion to take it from there versus CCI or CCD.
So potentially we could appropriate five thousand from there.
Yes, you could appropriate the rest of the ARP and five thousand from there and just have all kinds of nice new sections. It's an, it's an awesome, amazing improvement. It is huge for quality of place.
So you're good with the, doing wider sidewalks on the east side or the west side, either one?
Not, not the west side, that, that was the problem. We decided to go up the west side and, and with, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move the utility poles because there wasn't enough room and we had to move everything.
Yeah, cause you can't get to your eight feet without utility poles and you couldn't get to your eight feet on the other side because of utilities. If I do remember right, a couple fire hydrants maybe?
It was just close and we opted at that time because it was already in relatively good shape and this was less shape and it was kinda like, this needs replaced, so we opted on this side.
Yeah.
That was an option, I mean...
Was it still a good option?
It's still willing to look at it, but, but again, we need to have an eight foot path.
Right.
It has to be a trail and not a sidewalk.
But it could be cement, it doesn't have to be, or cement.
Yeah, yeah.
But I can tell you this, we can't afford the eighty-five thousand.
No.
There's no way.
No.
So.
No, I think we're definitely going with Thompson. Ken has...
Well, I'm just saying, you see what cheap got you on the roads, so.
Wow.
Well, but he is also doing two other towns.
I mean, there is absolutely nothing here. We don't know, you know, just between these two quotes, I'm just looking here, so they got twelve hundred lineal feet, but they're only doing fifty-three hundred square feet. This one's got fifty-three hundred square feet, but only doing a thousand lineal feet. And I know that he's got removal and disposal or he doesn't. I mean, he's got removal, but he's gotta find a place to dispose, it sounds like. Yeah.
Can we reach out to Brad and...
We can.
Get a...
Reach out to Brad, get a more detailed quote?
Yes, that way.
And maybe go over and...
I'll reach out to him first thing in the morning.
Okay.
He'll probably show up tomorrow.
Okay.
What would you guys ask for me to walk with him?
Well...
Side of the street, still what we're looking at plus this?
Yeah, do that and then, but just...
Be clear to him, we need a more...
Yeah, we need a more detailed...
I mean, let me know what time and I'll show up and walk with him and...
But did you wanna bring somebody else in, is that what you were saying?
I'm not even saying that, I just, I don't feel comfortable with that kinda, I mean, there's just nothing here and he sold his sixty-some thousand dollars. He's not even in the ballpark.
If you set it up, I can meet, if you're available, you can meet too and...
Make my...
That, that is if he has availability to work too, so.
Cause I'm available.
I would say everyone has a message, one you can find out.
Okay.
There you go.
Sounds great.
Why don't we go over and check out Clinton's, what he's been doing over there too?
He has been doing Clinton and Fairview, yes.
And maybe talk to him.
If you wanna talk over there.
For the bike path, so it's not going down Main Street on the west side because it's too much to move utility poles. The east side, Mark, I couldn't hear the last part.
So potentially, yes, it's gonna be on the east side.
But still going down Main Street where that catacorner bridge is going?
Correct, yes.
The east side would have the best easement to use, to have an eight foot path.
That's the thing, it was, there was a question on the easement and the water line, because the hydrants there.
Yeah, cause I heard it through there.
Do we have enough room between the hydrants and the easement, edge of the easement to put the path there? And it was really close.
Is there one hydrant?
I cannot remember.
How hard is it to load a hydrant? I think there's just like two, Jace?
I think originally we thought there was two, but the one was fine, I think it's what...
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't remember, it's been a long time.
How did the residents feel on that side? Has anybody knocked on their doors?
The residents?
Yeah, how do they feel about having that on the east side of Main Street?
I, I don't know that anybody's ever talked to him, Chris.
How do you guys feel about having wider sidewalks down here?
Makes no difference, man.
Well, Diane's probably on that side, yeah.
That's enough for me.
That's less you have to mow.
Even though...
I mean, I don't think we're taking it too much out of the grassy part, just mostly if you do the easement part will be...
It's pretty much from the...
You wouldn't come into the yard and go down the easement, yeah.
And...
Even though that's the best grass I have in mine.
You know what, Sean, you're gonna be fine.
Carol, can I answer your question? It's not, it's not real difficult to move the hydrant as long as we have, still have utility easement. As long as the hydrant has a valve, a working valve, that we can, it does have a valve, as long as we can shut it off there.
Yeah, we don't wanna get into that again, do we?
No.
No, I'm gonna start, start having a nervous breakdown, Gary wants to say valve.
I'm just saying, it can be done, it's not a difficult job, it's just...
So, uh, we do have a couple of estimates for taking out that tree.
That does have to be done, so.
Will have to be done, it should have, we've been talking about doing that so there can be more parking space in there anyway and it's kinda a hazard there, uh, right by the saloon. One's for sixteen fifty-five and...
Eighteen hundred.
The other one's eighteen hundred, Jace?
Eighteen hundred.
Okay, that's for stump grinding and removal.
That was just a phone call and wasn't written on paper.
So I, I remember...
I'll make a motion to...
Make a motion for lock raise, tree service.
No way, we can at least get that...
To lock that in.
Out of the way.
How much is it, sixteen fifty-five?
Sixteen fifty-five.
Yes.
Let's get that done.
Do I need to contact him tomorrow?
Yeah, they can get that done whenever...
Cody, you're the first?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ken, you're the second. Take your vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's good for it on that, then. You got the more new business?
Uh, let's see, I lost.
Think the next thing was the truck.
Oh, yes.
The truck.
So the truck would be something unique you've got?
We have two bids, um, I don't know if everybody knows, but we have the town truck out here for bids and we are going to open those right now. Okay, what happened?
Yeah. The minimum bid is five thousand dollars.
Is that for one of your girls?
No, that's for Justin.
It is? Is he still here?
No, he left.
Oh, wow. He knew. I submit this for our next mural.
No.
It's the truck one. I love Rose now on it. We can do that. Cause one of them's so square.
I said we do not buy that though.
Okay. Okay, I, Gary Nichols, bid fifty-one hundred for the Chevy twenty-five thousand town truck.
All in favor?
Gary, it looks like you have a truck.
I know, I saw Justin's, you know, bid me all up.
He left too, didn't he, Gary? I know.
I know.
So...
So, um...
You guys make a motion to accept that bid?
All in favor of...
I'll make a motion to accept the bid.
Or I'll second it.
One.
Cody, Ken, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I think we'd have a lot more bids on that thing.
You know what, I had one guy call about it, I didn't know where he was from and he just kept asking me if I had any dents in it. I was like, uh, you should probably come look at it if you're really worried about dents. I was like, I said, it's twenty years old, come on, it's a town truck, so, yeah.
I told Roger, I was like, I found it was a good one, he mentioned we'd buy it for, uh, like a, just a spare, you know, haul truck or something.
I never thought that anyone else owned it, yeah, but, yeah.
Three, five, no.
Alright, truck is sold.
Okay, cool.
Gary will figure it out, I'll find the title.
I don't need a title, just keep that lights on.
You can use this, we'll play it on it. I actually know where the title is. Okay, so the only other thing you guys have is you have a few other pieces you wanted to sell, some equipment you wanted to sell, we talked about selling. So if you wanna make a motion on that, that would be resolution two thousand twenty-four dash three. And these items, you can, um, I, this is not a requirement to advertise on the newspaper, we can put a Facebook post up on our town page, say we're selling the following items, you can view them uptown, this is our minimum offering on them, you can do the same thing and open them up the next meeting. Take bids on those items.
Do I need to read all this?
You don't have to read all that, but you can say what we're getting rid of, so, this is additional surplus property.
The following personal property owned by the town is declared surplus, surplus property pursuant to IC I twenty-two twenty-two. Cub Cadet mower with blade.
Let's be clear, there's no deck on the mower, correct, Jace?
There is a deck that may be for that mower in the old water building. It is buried behind a lot of stuff.
Okay.
We have...
I, I know, yeah.
Three hundred dollars on that?
That's the minimum on it. It does have a nice little snow blade, you're just gonna do some sidewalks or something.
A six-foot grader blade, eight hundred dollars.
That's a tractor attachment, correct, Jace?
Yes.
Okay. We have a nice new grader box, we don't need that.
Yeah, a fifty-two inch Velocity Commercial Scag mower, three thousand dollars.
What's the hours on that, Jace?
Six hundred and some of, I haven't looked for quite a while.
Okay. We just don't need it anymore with the John Deere that we just bought.
And the, the town will dispose of the above described personal property by accepting sealed bids.
And we'll... Open them at our next meeting.
Yeah, clerk treasurer is hereby authorized to public notice of his sale as required.
Yep.
Adopted this day thirteenth of August.
So does anyone make a motion to press?
I'll make a motion to pass that.
I'll second it.
Ken, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Alright.
So we will open those bids the next meeting, I think that's the...
I think so. The next meeting will be your budget hearing as well.
So we do reports now?
I think so, unless anybody else has a new business.
What's going on with, have we advertised for another board member or what's...
We need to advertise for another board member.
We are looking for another... We are looking for another board member, we're looking for another board member. Submit a letter of.
Interest?
Interest.
Sure.
Have to do, send a letter in.
Yep, drop a letter in.
When I'm in the Dollar General, I ask people.
We've been accosting people on Dollar General.
Been saying it the last few weeks.
We're gonna have to start hanging out at the new gas station there.
Somewhere.
See if we can find somebody. No requirements.
Other than you have to live in.
Yeah, delivered to.
You need to be a registered voter as well.
Oh, you do? Really? I didn't know that.
I'm pretty sure.
Good thing I'm a registered voter.
Yeah? I think we are.
I have a couple things I thought of, is it too late for me to ask questions?
No.
Well, you're returning to public comment shortly, okay?
Hang in there.
All right. You got your partner, anything else? Anybody else?
Anybody else have any concerns or anything? Oh, I know we talked about a fall cleanup day, is anybody interested in that?
I think any cleanup day is good. We can work one in there.
Not in October, October is.
Yeah, that's right, right in the middle of the Bridge Fest.
Yeah, Bridge Fest. I mean, if we get it done before Bridge Fest, I'm cool with that, because that would be nice, but otherwise.
I'm, yeah, on a personal level, I'm pretty maxed out right now, so, you guys wanna do, just because I'm just super busy. Super, super busy, but you guys wanna do one?
Well, I didn't know whether, how much did it cost us?
Um, it costs us about eight hundred dollars. We got a little bit in donation money, that was for two large dumpsters, um. Let me double check that, but you can go on at the meeting, let me double check.
All right, well, let's do reports, uh.
Cause Casey gives us a pretty good deal on Republicans.
Water sewer, we have eighty-eight penalties. Three tags. No shut-off. Street department.
A, I, we gotta go back to water for a second, but go ahead on the street department, I'll go back.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if I have anything other than, I don't even know what department this is, but what's going on with the spraying and mosquitoes?
Yeah.
It's been sprayed a couple times, I think.
When?
I've sprayed once, I've been sprayed since I moved the sprayer to the new truck. I'm having a wiring issue.
Wiring issue?
And then, did, I mean, we voted on moving the sign out here, right? I mean, that's not happened yet, has it?
Uh, we've ordered a new sign.
There'll be on the corner.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Probably the street.
Yeah, we, we talked about that when we walked up.
Yeah.
We've got to.
I shouldn't have brought that up, we're going to order some, no parking.
We can talk about those in the street department.
Yeah.
Did you do water?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm eighty-eight.
Okay. Eighty penalties. No shut-off. In water, we did have our item inspection. Gary has a few things he's gotta correct, it wasn't that bad. We are, we've replaced, Jason, are we at eighty-eight meters?
Manual reed?
No, replaced.
Well, I don't know that.
I think, I think we're.
I'm pretty sure you told me eighty-eight already.
Yeah, I think we've replaced eighty-eight, we have ten more to put in, plus the school, and. I think we're eighty-nine now, we won this out on warranty, plus the school and ten more, that'll put us at that good one-hundred number, one is, we need to buy more water meters. They are so expensive, but they're going out, Jase, how many last time did you manually read?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four manual reads. Now he's gonna know where every water meter in town is, though. We are, it is a copper and lead year, so I have some bottles I have to distribute to specific households in town, um, for Gary. And they also want to do a washout on the water tower. Which means the water tower will have to be drained, and so we'll, we'll run the pumps all day, Jase, did they decide when they're doing that?
He's gonna, he tried calling back, didn't get an answer, he's gonna try to push it back for end of September.
Okay, because he wanted to do it like this week, and Gary was like, ah, that's too much right now, so they wanna wash out the water tower. Well, they've gone back and forth, some years they say they wanna paint it, and then this guy didn't say that, he just said he wanted to do a washout, which Gary was a little unclear. I talked to the guy, you and Gary talked to him too, um, anything wastewater, Jase, that you know of? Oh, wastewater did go down, he did have a pump fail, there's a sycamore in here in Bill for repair on that. He has had some issues lately, but nothing substantial, and he's expecting an item inspection anytime. Okay, sorry, that's my water sewer update.
Back to street.
Now you can go to street, yeah.
So you mentioned the mosquito spraying, and you're gonna get that fixed, and.
I've messed with it a couple times, it may be a knee problem, it may be a machine problem, not a percent. But I've called Clark before, when I was here previously, there really is no maintenance person around here. It, it would have to be shipped on a. I can't remember where, it was nowhere around here.
What, tomorrow, let's call Big Jack's on that, and let me see if I can get him on the phone, remind me.
Jack's?
Smith Small Engine might be able to.
That might be one.
Be something to repair that as well.
Call King's Repair in Marshall.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it sounds like we got a couple, like, Jase, did you have anything else with street?
I did not.
So are we needing to add some asphalt there where Jerry was talking about?
To be honest, I drove that, I, I didn't see anything that looked out of place. When I do asphalt, I, I will go down through there and sprinkle where I feel that they need it.
Talk about Miller, right?
Oh, Miller, yeah.
Yeah, it's kinda right there.
It's where you turn on the Miller, it's like main and Miller.
Right by the funeral home, it's about a valve, about yay big, and it's just going down.
Kinda sinking?
There's like a valve right there, that's up out of the ground.
The small one.
Because it's kinda like sinking around, but it's only. Like yay big total, it's not like. I mean, the valve is like yay big.
So, yeah, if you can put some concrete, some patch in there to help fill that in, that'd be great. Mark, it's on to you.
Oh, parks? Um, I think we were talking about trying to get a different grant for the park. So we could probably get a new, new sidewalk on the street side, it's so sunken down and it's really rutted. Carol was looking into probably getting another grant if we can, and, and I don't know about a fence for that street side. No one really seems to be interested in, in putting a fence up there. I don't know what kind we could probably put there, but I feel like it's still a little bit of a safety issue for the kids dodging in and out from the park to the street, back and forth. Now, other people don't think there was really issue, any issue there, but, um, I'm a little worried about it myself. But I do think we can get some new sidewalks there if we get another grant going of some sort.
And any grants, don't we have to have a park board to receive grant?
Yeah, I, I haven't been able to update hard on that, so, we need. For, to get the grant, the USDA grant, we need a park board that has to be, people in town, it can't be anybody on the board. So, I've asked a few people, and then they said they could, and then, then they couldn't, so, right now, you know, we have till November to turn that.
Master Park Plan in.
Master Park Plan in, know what you need and what you want, how much it's gonna cost. And then, I looked at a grant for, of course, well, international paper had one, but we're not a.
We're not a five oh one C three?
Yeah.
There is money from the community foundation that we can tap into in the Roseville Forever Fund.
So, five oh one C three issue, that's, was a big part of the mule issue, is the grant money had to go through a five oh one C three. You guys are five oh one C three, I mean, it would be something, part of our park, if that's something that they can get that grant. Would it, would you guys be willing to, if I, if we essentially send it to you, would you be? Cause that's what I had to do with Arts Eliana to get the grant work from the state for.
That one has to be in by August thirtieth, so.
We're not gonna make that one, we're not gonna make that one, so, we can talk about that later.
You know, if you have a situation like that, I, I don't know if we could do it, but I think the foundation.
The community foundation can do it.
Will be willing to do that.
They can do it, and the civic center could actually do it as well.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and you get somebody like that, and especially the community foundation, they may just throw in a little bit as well, along with any kind of grant you can.
Right, so, yeah, because they could totally administer that, yes.
But I do wanna say that Jase is doing a great job on the park, it looks good all the time, I mean, it doesn't look bad like it did.
It looks really nice, Jase, yes.
There's a lot of kids have been using it.
Yeah.
Every time I go by, I'll see Clark.
I would like to paint some of the equipments, and then it look like we're gonna get any new, well, soon. And I'd like to resurface the basketball court. I don't know what that would entail, does anybody know anything about that, because would it just be like, can we just do a?
I think what's there is just concrete, isn't it?
It's just concrete.
It's concrete, but I didn't know whether there was some kind of paint or an application that would work to, to fill in cracks and.
That'd be a Scott Fuqua question right there.
Okay, that sounds good.
Can you skim over that, can you skim concrete over that?
Yeah.
I don't know, I.
You can probably, you can probably acid wash it, fill in the cracks, and then epoxy it.
I say put epoxy coating on it, or a pin, a pin layer basketball on top of it.
That sounds pretty good.
Okay, there's a couple options, we can do some looking.
I'd like that, we'll talk to Scott.
Yes, let's.
This is town meeting, not a comedy club.
Let's guilt Scott.
Just gotta make sure you put on there, doesn't get slick if it.
That's right, with epoxy, it's true.
It can be, I mean, that's the floor inside of our house, the night is all, it's epoxy, but.
Yeah. That's what I wondered, you know.
That'd be a Fuqua question.
It's just some of those tennis courts you see, they look like they're foam almost or something.
Yeah, I think it's a, and it's almost like a brushed surface, like brushed concrete, but it's an epoxy or some kind of coating, it's a brushed surface, yeah.
Okay, fire department?
So, zero fire, ten medical, one other, eleven total runs.
We have a request.
Okay.
Um, I've got another truck that has almost twelve-year-old tires on it. It's our main squad, it goes pretty much, almost everything we go to, we'd like to replace those. It's on our, the two thousand thirteen, so our, our tires are date coded thirteen, two thousand thirteen, so they'll be twelve years old at the end of, by January. I've got some estimates, they're all over the place, anywhere from about fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred, so I'm in that ballpark, but I'm still looking. I just, just try to get approval to do that, I'll avoid money.
There's plenty of, there's plenty of public safety money there, so.
Yeah.
Maybe we just need to make a motion.
Make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to provide new tires, I don't know, up to two thousand?
That, that's plenty, I've got estimates, like I said, anywhere between about fifteen and eighteen hundred, I just haven't decided where we're gonna go yet.
I'll second it.
All right. You're the first, fire is the second, take your vote. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry, aye.
I just think I should put in there a little bit.
Yeah, my mind was off on something else.
Motion passed for the fire department to get up to two thousand dollars to go towards tires for the twenty thirteen truck.
Here, Cody.
That's six tires, two by the way.
That's the law, of course.
That's our duty truck.
I know sometimes these guys got a thankless job, but I've seen them in action this weekend, and.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna thank you to bottom my heart to start with, but then, yeah.
No problem. Why we do it?
Why they, yeah.
Okay, one burial on the cemetery.
That looks nice.
No cremation, no, no grave stone.
Nope, not this one. Is there a list of, uh, the, all the, like, who's buried there?
Yeah, can you provide that by next mini-moder?
If you give me a name, I can probably find them, but, um. As long as they're not in the old, old section, I don't want me to talk about. I'll find out. Yeah, you just let me know, Diane, but yeah, no, we don't have like a list, we have a mapping system that's really highly sophisticated.
We have several lists.
I started to convert it into a, like, a document, and it.
He had a nervous breakdown.
Yeah, I spent like a week on it, like, and stuff is all over the place, like. You're like, oh, well, this slide says the exact same thing as this line, but it's backwards, so I was just importing the same stuff.
He cried, he cried a little bit, and I was kind of by Taylor Swift tickets that week, and it was the best of Hotness, and so, yeah.
I think I'm probably just gonna have to go out there and literally.
Take pictures.
Yeah. But eventually, yes, I still want to do that. Give it all computerized.
I think if we did it after.
Uh, four warnings. Six traffic stops, one nine-one-on hangup, one accidental property damage, one, two animal complaints, one injury, two investigation follow-ups, one juvenile problem, one shots fired, one sickness, one theft, one ordinance violation.
We also have a request.
No.
Michael tore up his radio battery.
He what?
Just had a bad radio battery, we need to get a couple of his ex-radio batteries.
Sounds like a radical problem.
Price?
Uh, between one-ten and a hundred and forty dollars per, depending on where I can find it, so I need two, we need two of them, so, three hundred bucks would be way more than enough.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve up to three hundred dollar spending on batteries.
I will second it.
Radio.
Everybody in favor of the police department receiving three hundred dollars for batteries?
Aye.
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 Motion.
That's time.
Properties?
There ain't no time for that, there are too many of them right now. Kevin, is this your new letter for properties?
Yes.
That's the letter I wrote up, and I sent that to Scott Craig and had him look at it for me. And I sent him a copy of the ordinance to make sure that we were, everything was covered, and then I printed out these new dollars comps. He liked the way it was typed up, but he gave me a couple pointers on things that I can do, that I need to do.
Okay.
And things that that letter will not cover. Basically, if it's a structure and the structure is falling down or needs to be taken down, that is a whole long.
That's a long process, yes, he and I talked about that multiple times.
This will be for junk in yards, high grass, that kinda stuff.
Okay. I like this.
Yeah, I, I just, I took what he had and kinda changed it, put it on our letterhead. So I just gave that, so you guys could review it, and.
Okay.
We'll look that over and see. Court treasurer's report?
Um, I met with Catherine from the state on the budget, she said that the general fund is really healthy right now. I, last year, I requested a hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and eight dollars for my budget, she said I can fully fund that with no problem. If, I gave everyone a copy, oh, I didn't, they're in a pile, so, they're in a pile. I, everyone has a copy now of the budget, there is eight thousand three hundred and eight dollars that is not budgeted in the general fund yet. So if anybody has a specific request for something they feel like we're gonna need in the general fund, let me know. in the general fund yet, so if anybody has a specific request for something they feel like we're gonna need in the general fund, let me know, because I haven't used that all. I have accounted for basic three percent cost of living raises like we do every year, we took hydrant rental out last year, we don't do that anymore. I will not need ten thousand dollars in outside services anymore, since we are doing our mowing in-house. I did leave a little bit of money there, just in case we do have to have somebody come in and work on something. Um, but, but the mo, for the most part, everything looks pretty good. MVH is looking pretty good, along with MVH restricted, so we sh, we may be able to apply for another community crossings grant next year. Um, and it's that budget, it looks pretty healthy too, especially MVH restricted, there's a pretty good chunk in it. DLGF doesn't recognize MVH restricted, it puts it all with MVH. That's the stupid part of the state, sorry, state of Indiana. Um, we have thirty-six thousand MVH restricted right now, and I will continue to build this year, so how many are coming out of that? So we should have a good map, should we decide to do a community crossings run next year, we will not need a major PAMP update this year either, because we had a major PAMP update last year, which we paid for, we'll have to have a minor, which should only cost a few hundred dollars. Um, tomorrow, I'm representing the town of Roseville, unless someone else wants to, at the Chamber of Commerce dinner, or luncheon in Rockville, just to talk about what we have going on here in town. So if anyone has anything they want me to include, I know, work schedules and things like that, and you have babysitting, so. So, yeah, so I'm gonna do that tomorrow. Um, and, um, the only other thing we did talk about tonight is we do need to raise our water rates, I know no one wants to raise our rates. Uh, last month, we, we were just slightly negative, which I was really surprised about. Um, it's my recommendation that we go fifteen percent, quite honestly, which our base rate's twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents, it ends up being about three dollars on that rate, you know what I mean?
Didn't Scott come back in at, or the rating, say seventeen as well?
He came in about ten to fifteen, he's gonna come, you know, I had a long conversation about this today. He does not like the way our ordinance reads right now, he thinks we need to adjust some other fees within there, like a tap fee for new services is really low, we couldn't, we would go in the hole if someone had needed a tap fee right now. Um, for wastewater, we just have a time and materials tap fee, I think that's probably the way to go on that, and whatnot, but we do need to get, we do need to up water, we are um, we are going in the hole with odd meters going out, the meters are really starting to stress us out, but the light at the end of the tunnel for water is we do pay off our water bond next fall, and that is four thousand dollars a month. So that will really help our cash flow, and, I mean, we were hoping we could string out the meter replacement for three years, but I don't know if we're going to be able to or not. So, um, everybody wants to start thinking about that, I know, I know nobody wants to, and it really steams.
Well, I mean, when we did the math, it-
But, it, we're coming in-
I was like, oh, wow, this is-
Yeah. Um, everything's more, the chemicals are more, salaries are more, uh, the inspections are heftier, we're in the middle of this line, lead line service inventory, it's just one thing after another they keep asking us to do, so it's a lot. Um, but that's where I'm at, so, now you can be public comment, and then, we're good.
Anyone else to probably comment?
Um, the trailer, I don't know, I don't even know what that is behind.
I do know what you're talking about.
Grasses, haven't been voted on.
We, we talked about that literally just the other day.
Um, I talked to him, Kevin talked to him one day, um, Mr. Ireland that owns the trailer over there on East Street, Kevin?
Yep.
And he said he was-
A cousin or nephew?
He had a nephew who was mowing it, and I think it's been mowed maybe once this summer. Um, I reached out to him again one day, and he said he was gonna, he said he was gonna get down here and tear that trailer down, but it's obviously not happened, so I think that will probably be part of this new letter we're doing, but yes, I, he has been contacted.
Okay, and then the other thing is the speed bump on Main Street, right out in front of our houses. Is that ever really shaved down?
If, if we paved that side of Main Street, it would definitely be shaved out, yes.
Can we take our speed bump downstairs then? It wakes us up in the middle of the night when the trailer's in, it is so loud.
I've had a few other complaints about that since I've been back.
Jace, you have a way you can level it, or move it?
Heck of a grinder.
Yeah.
A lot of this.
I think the completion of Main Street with a community crossings grant would be our next move.
Is there a plan to pave this side?
Yeah, I think that'd be the next grant we would apply for, for sure. Because we did that side already, um, and-
So that'd probably be the, not this next summer, but this summer.
Well, if you, if you apply in the beginning, if you, there's two callouts for community crossings, there's a January callout, and then there's a midsummer callout, so if you get into the January one, if we did that spec out for the beginning of the year, we could potentially do that next year, would just depend on the money and the matching. So, um, the, the problematic area is Main Street from Central Street to Middle Street, because it is a concrete road, and you don't mill very far, and if you look at the curbs, you, you have to watch your pavement, because you would be level with the curbs if you just start overlaying because of the way it sits, so that's the only issue, John McMillan and I talked about that at one point in time, but I think that, my personal opinion is doing this side of Main Street would complete that, we'd be in pretty good shape, but, so.
Then there's some side roads.
A few side roads, yes, that could be done at different times, yeah.
Um, does, do you know if the county is gonna start on that bridge at all? Cause they said they were, it was in the budget for this summer, but-
They never put it in the budget, it was never in the budget.
Yeah, they told us, they told us they put it in the budget.
Oh, what'd you say?
Budget hearing for next year's Thursday.
For the county?
Yeah. Yeah, cause they told us that they put it in the budget for us, we were gonna pay over half of it, to put a pedestrian, replace the bridge and the pedestrian, and when I went and talked to them, it's like, no, it's not in the budget, we're not gonna do it, and they had no interest in doing it, so that's why we're doing this other approach, and I heard it was, I heard the same thing, that they were gonna do it this year, and then I talked to somebody about it, and it's like, no, no, that's not in the budget.
Yeah, no.
They'd forget about us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
Any other public comment, guys? Nope, okay.
Motion to pay bills, Carol? Motion to pay the bills?
I will make a motion.
I will second it.
Barbara, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, I'll make the motion.
Motion to adjourn, Cody? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.